...Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please Commissioner Chip Penion will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Chip.
Best pray. Father, we thank you for this day and for your love for us. We thank you for the time you've given us to come tonight to do the county's business. Father, we pray you would grant upon each one of us wisdom and knowledge and understanding to make the best decisions that we can for our great county. Father, we pray for all those that across our nation that are continuing to hurt in the aftermaths of the hurricane. And Father, we pray for them, come for them. We thank you for all those that responded to that. We pray you bless them. Father, we ask you to be with all our first responders tonight, that you would take care of them and their families, continue to keep us all safe. Father, we just thank you for this opportunity that you give us. Again, just help us as we go through this meeting tonight. We love you and we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Charlotte P. Higginson. Greg Lynch. David Jones. Jim Everwater. Lee Bogel. Pettis Reed. Mike Kush. Rhonda Allen. Jeff Phillips.
Present. Thank you. Vice Chairman Kush is not here. I've looked at those minutes from our August 12th meeting. I find them to be in order and I need a motion to approve. I have a motion and a second to approve the August 12th minute meetings. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. No items withdrawn. We're ready for business. Item 6A, these items are zoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. 6A1 Patel and Patel, the item number is 19-a011. Location is 5665 Old Salem Road. Commission district is eight. The county commissioner is Pettis Reed. The size of the site is 1.42 acres. Tax map 123. Existing zoning is RM residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CS for commercial services. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you and good evening, commission members. Hope everybody's doing well this evening. This first item should look familiar to you. This item was first considered by the commission back in July of this year. If you recall, they were asking also, as they're asking tonight, for commercial services zoning. There were some concerns about the speculative nature of the development as well as the proximity of single-family residential units to the property. Since that time, of course, this was recommended for denial at the planning commission's July meeting. Since that time, the applicant has worked with staff and a local engineering firm to secure a concept plan, which has been included with your agenda packets. It's on your iPads and we also will bring up a copy of that on the big screen here for those in the audience to see as well. The plan shows a potential 3,150 square foot building with the possibility of a future expansion. This is not a planned development application, mind you, so this applicant cannot be bound by this particular plan, but it does provide a possible direction for the development and give the planning commission an idea of the direction that they did want to go with that. If this application were to be recommended approved tonight, of course, it would have to go through the zoning at the full planning, or a full county commission, excuse me. But then if that's approved there, it would still have to have a site plan submittal by an engineered, an engineered site plan submittal to our office for planning commission approval. The application in and of itself really is unchanged from what they were asking for before. So with that, the applicants are present. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for staff at this time?
Did you say it was the building? What's going to go in the building?
I'm sorry?
What kind of business?
It's retail. My understanding is they want to put, the applicants present can speak to this, so they can correct me if I'm wrong, but they want to put like a small restaurant in the building.
The applicant or applicants present, if you would, please come forward. If you would, state your names and addresses for the record and then give us a brief explanation of what you have in mind.
Yes, sir. Good evening. I'm Agnes Patel and my partner, Vijay Patel, here today at the planning commission about hearing for a proposed zoning change for the property located at 5665 Old Salem Road, currently residential. We currently own the house. We have proposed a concept plan to the planning and engineering department for the approval for the standalone building for relocating Subway restaurant, which is currently located at 6129 Highway 99, Rockville, Tennessee. We have been at this location for past 10 years and we think this is the right time to move on for the standalone building.
Thank you. Anything to add?
I'm Clyde Roundtree, Hovellson Steel Engineering. As far as the site plan's concerned, we wanted to make sure that it fit well proportionally onto the site and we feel like we got adequate parking even for the phase two component of the building. We did want to respect the adjacent relationships with the neighbors, so we wanted to make sure the back of the building was basically turned away from the neighborhood. We also are going to be septic out there, so we have a septic field area that kind of separates the rear of the building from the adjacent neighbors. And we wanted to orient, you know, kind of take advantage of the corner by doing a little bit of a kind of a diagonal orientation to kind of get a little advantage of New Salem as well as the Old Salem location. And as far as, they've been a successful business in Rockvale and this is still in that community, so this is why we feel like the site's appropriate for our request. But I'm available for any comments now or questions now and then after the public hearing. I'd love to respond to anything the community may have to say. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicants while they're here? Nope. Sorry. This is just for planning commission at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Did you all hold a neighborhood meeting out there at all? Clyde, you or Doug, either one could probably answer this. What kind of buffer would, would there be, sort of landscape buffer, something that would be there between the neighbors and this location?
Yeah, it'd be a type two.
It would have to be a type two buffer.
Yes, it'd be a type two buffer on in between us and neighbors.
Which is, depending on how they structure it, it can be either a 30-foot buffer and that's with just plantings and not a solid visual screen like a fence. Or if they use a fence, they can have a 15-foot separation, a minimum 15-foot buffer. There's still plantings involved, but with a solid visual screen, a fence, something like that, there's not as many plantings required. But minimum would be 15 feet.
Well, 'cause I'm thinking about like where would dumpster placement be and things like that? Where are the neighbors going to be looking at?
Because it's in two phases, more than likely, I would say the dumpster would probably be more towards the center of the property, you know, away from the closest relationship to the neighbors. And then as the phases develop, it's probably going to move more towards Old Salem Road. And then the dumpster itself would have to have some containment as well as landscaping around it as well. So that'd probably be the logical progression, hadn't gotten to that level of detail at this point.
And then Doug, you may be able to answer this too. Would, in terms of like a photometric plan or something like that, in terms of the light impact on the neighbors, what would that consist of?
The requirements for a photometric plan, there can be no, we do require one, yes. There can be no more than a .5-foot candle at the property line. So they would have to submit a photometric plan that would demonstrate that. And that would include, you know, schematic or a detail rather of the lighting fixtures. You know, we typically ask that they use the ones that kind of point down, you know, that don't just allow light to spread anywhere, you know, more focused in that regard.
And then my last question, what would the rules be about signage? Like street?
Yeah, they would be allowed to have, I mean, they'd be, they'd have an allowance for ground signs, they'd have an allowance. Do you want, do you want details as far as, okay, let me give you a second, I gotta pull it up online. They're allowed to have one ground sign maximum per street frontage. That maximum, let's see, the square foot can be no more than 10 feet in height. It can't exceed more than 50 square feet for a single tenant, 100 square feet for a multi-tenant. Illumination can be internal or external. They are allowed a certain amount of changeable copy signs. They also are allowed a wall or graphic signs, things like that. I mean, what would you would normally see? They do, this would just have whatever's allowed in the ordinance for that kind of a development.
Other questions of the applicants? Thank you.
I have one question on the entrance. Under phase one, would it be a problem to have two exits, one on the Old Salem? You're showing just one now in phase one on the New Salem.
I mean, if that's going to be a condition of approval for sure, that's something we'd like to do, but if, if there's any way, just because you can see how the lot develops, it's going to be quite a stretch to build that access road on to Old Salem. But we're confident that if it's successful, they'll be doing phase two, so that's, that's a reasonable request.
Let me just clarify real quick, Clyde. They can't condition, this is not a planned development, so they can't condition that. But, I mean, obviously, you've made your thoughts known, Mr. Jones, and, I mean, that's something we could also look at during site plan review, so, if this were to be approved.
Would it be required, Doug, in phase one, to have two entry points?
We'd have to discuss it at that point.
Other questions?
I have one more just for Mike. Mike, what's the distance from the entrance into phase one and the intersection where Old Salem and New Salem intersect? And do you have any concerns about the distance there? I know we don't like to always have entry points very close to major intersections.
I don't have this at a scale drawing. So I would say typically we'd like to have it as far away from the intersection. You're talking about this entrance on New Salem? I think that's as far as, as we can get it on this, this proposed parcel here. So I mean, it, it's as far as it needs to be. I mean, it, typically we'd like to see 150 feet or more, and I'd say they probably have that.
From a safety standpoint, and this is one of those times I'm having an argument in my head about which way I think would be the better way for it to go, but from a safety standpoint, would it be smarter to have the entrance off of Old Salem instead of New Salem so you're not disrupting that larger flow of traffic? Or is that more detrimental to the neighborhood to be putting more traffic on that smaller road? That's the argument I'm having in my head. I'm just curious, from a safety standpoint, what would be the smarter thing to do?
I, the initial phase, I would probably want it on New Salem, so it's a separate entrance and exit, separate movements. Yes, it would be nice to have another entrance on Old Salem, but I would rather see it standalone, be a standalone entrance for this first phase. It's 3,150 square feet of a building. And this entrance will, because New Salem is a T-dot road, it would have to follow T-dot standards and they do have a, a distance requirement for an intersection. So I think they've exceeded that as well. It's, I think it's only like 50 feet for a commercial.
Doug, is the right-of-way of New Salem Highway, is that within the city limits? I guess what I'm getting at is this property considered adjoining city limits?
Yes.
Or connected to the city limits? So it is, it would be possible then for the city to annex this property?
Well, to answer your-
Assuming that the property owner was-
Right. To answer your question, generally, yes, that it would be possible. Now, let me just throw this out there. About a year or two ago, the state legislature passed some changes to the annexation laws that allow the cities to do non-contiguous annexations. So even if it wasn't connecting, they still could. So, but to answer your question, is it adjacent? You can see on the map on the screen that Mike's got up, that gray color right there, that's, that's actually been annexed into the city. So that right-of-way is part of the city limits. So, to answer your question, yes.
Well, I don't want to get too far off in the weeds here. But as the city grows and they have properties that are very, very close to the city limits like that, they essentially can't expand or they can't annex something without a property owner's consent. Now, is that my understanding of the law?
That is true. Now, they can annex by referendum in the area that they are annexing. There's not many places that have tried that yet. I think Franklin is getting ready to try one, is my understanding, but no one in Rutherford County has. But that's a totally different process and for something as small as that, I don't know if it'd be worth, you know, something like that. But to answer your question, again, generally, is, the days of being able just to annex at will for municipalities is, is gone.
Other questions at this time? Thank you. This time I'll declare the public hearing open for item 19-a100 for Patel and Patel. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. If you would, name an address. Thank you.
Thank you. We were here about two months ago, I believe, and we said then, and we still say now, that home is part of the neighborhood. It's part of Silent Shade subdivision. And while I appreciate there being more detail this time in what they plan to do, we're still against it because it's taking a home out of our neighborhood and putting something commercial right on top of us. You've got commercial, if you look at this picture, you've got commercial area all across the other side of 99. It's already been zoned commercial. On the other side of the home beside, behind ours, all that's zoned commercial, going back down towards Veterans Parkway. There's a lot of commercial property already been zoned over there. And we just believe that we don't want, I, I heard the attorney say that they're talking about future expansion. What does that mean? What, what exactly is that? What, I know they want to put a Subway there, but what's the future expansion? What does that entail? We don't know. I mean, what could go in there? 24-hour market? Liquor store, maybe? You know? We don't want that right on top of us all hours of night. So we just, you know, we just, our point is, and our position is still the same. You know, if they, if they would like to go somewhere else and another piece of property, they can sell that home. There's three schools a half mile down the road. A family would love to have that home. Be a good family home. Their kids would go right down the road to the three new schools. And that's our position. I mean, he could sell that home right now, make his money back, probably get a little bit more. Real estate's very high in that area. So that's, that's our position. We're still against it. Anything that involves tearing a home down in our neighborhood and building right on top of us, you know, we're still against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I pretty much had about the same thing to say as Roger had to say about-
If you would introduce yourself. If you would introduce yourself. Introduce yourself, your name.
I'm Tim Justice, 5613 Old Salem Road. I pretty much have the same thing to say as Roger had about, you know, tearing down a perfectly nice home. It's got a brand-new fence, you know, it's a brand-new pool. I don't understand why they want to come in there and put a commercial property when they have commercial property just right across the highway. It's already zoned commercial. They have some, like he said, just on the other sides of our house, on the other side of 99 also. It just doesn't make sense to me to tear down a perfectly good home in our neighborhood. And also, next to the fire station on Old Salem there, I don't know whether it's, it's on the map there or not, but there's, they've already started framing houses in there too. So there's houses everywhere around there. And when you have commercial property sitting on, right there on the highway, I just don't, on the other side, I don't understand why they want to tear down a house and do that and tear up our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Barbara Justice and I'm speaking for Bill and Chris Dixon. They live at 5591 Old Salem Road. And they feel the same that we do. This is a residential subdivision. We're all senior citizens. These are our forever homes. And this is going to come in here and tear our quiet subdivision up where we want to retire. And some of us are still raising children. And this is going to bring in residential property, which could be liquor stores, dollar stores, Subways, gas stations, so on. And already the traffic on our street, we can hardly get out of our driveway because the traffic is so bad going up and down Old Salem Road and 99. If you get in the mornings, you better turn and go back and go down Veterans Parkway to a light because you're not going to get out because of all the traffic. And if we get that in there, traffic will be so bad, we'll never get out. Plus, they could be bringing crime in, depending on what type of stores it is, how late they're open, and things like that. So we just really appreciate if you would take our feelings into advance because there's schools there and like he said, there's going to be new homes, there's going to be a lot more families that are coming in there and it's going to be bringing more traffic too, which will be a good thing because it's homes and families. But please take into consideration that this is our forever homes and we don't want them ruined and turned into commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners? Any comments from staff?
I'm not hearing anybody else. I'm just going to throw my two cents worth out there. While I recognize Highway 99 is a corridor that, in our lifetimes, we'll certainly see a lot of commercial and a whole lot of businesses and a lot more traffic than is there now. In this particular instance, this just seems like a residential neighborhood to me and I'm not sure that imposing a commercial establishment this early is appropriate for the neighborhood. There are a lot of very good places to put a commercial business, just, just my humble opinion.
If, if any comments?
I agree, I agree with Jim. I think it is, it is a subdivision, although it is out on the road where, where you want your business to be. If any, if I was going to have a business, I'd want it on the road, but, but it is part of that subdivision. So I oppose it.
Mr. Chairman?
Pettis.
I guess I'm looking at this, I have to look at it with two hats, I guess is the way I have to see this. This evening, I guess I come in here as a county commissioner because they read my name as the commissioner out there, but I'm also a planning commissioner. When I became a planning commissioner, I went through some of the same schools a lot of you did. And I remember, basically, probably one of the first ones I come into, when, back in 2011 or whatever, when we had someone from the state here that quoted everything out of Tennessee Code's annotated and what we had to think about. And I'm sure Commissioner Phillips up here and, and you, yeah? I call you Craig. I can't, it's hard for me to call you Commissioner Lynch. We've known each other so long. And Commissioner Allen over here, but if you remember, he was telling us that when you become a commissioner, you can't let your emotions figure into what you're thinking about. I've got to tell you, the last few weeks, my emotions have been pushing hard every direction whatsoever, in this one right here. And, and the reason I have to say that is that as far as the Patels are concerned right here, I've known them a long time too. They're part of that district out there too. Back in 2013, I lost a good part of my colon and the only thing I could eat was Subway sandwiches. And then, in the latter part of 2013, I lost, I left kidney due to sarcoma cancer. And it got in 2014, when I was running for the commission seat, people started calling Subway as my office out there because that's where you'd find me. Because that's what I ate all the time and I've known the Patels all this time, so. And then when you have to look at Tennessee Code annotated as far as ethics is concerned, the Patels have given me a meal every now and then. And right now, everybody's talking about transparency and whatever, and I'll admit that to, standing here before you tonight. Now, I haven't had any today. I haven't been back since we've discussed this lately or this week. But when, any of you that are county commissioners, you know that whenever a piece of property comes before planning, the individual is going to make that request, they are told to go and see their county commissioner and talk to him about it. And Mr. Patel did contact me and we discussed it. And I did tell him what to do, how to go and the proper things he needed to follow through, and we discussed that. And we discussed this, what he needed to do. The first thing I told him right off the bat, I think, was you need to go out there and meet your neighbors and see what the neighbors had to say and whatever. And we've discussed this. And then I asked him, point blank, and some of you have discussed this right here, why do you want to go there? And I think it's been said, there's other commercial property out that way. And the reason being that Subway, he wants to put it there is the fact that he wants to remain in this community, because he has been a part of this community. If you'll go to any ballgame, you'll see the Subway is sponsoring part of it. Any of them out there, he's been a part of it. But where he's at now, he rents and the rent continually goes up. He wants to own his own business and that's why he was going there. When that property come available, just like any of us, he saw it and saw an opportunity to do something. So that's why he's wanting to do that. And all of us can totally and completely understand that. So I'd have to say, I, I totally understand it too. Now, I have to say also, I understand the neighbors out there and their property, what they're wanting to protect because I built a house on our property that had been in the family out there. But I've been, our family's been on that road where I'm at right now since 1802. And I built right back on the homestead where we had had a house since 1842 and built a house. And when I built it there in 1998, right across in front of me was a house in the distance, there's a house in front of me. And every night, I could sit on the porch and listen to the, listen to the cows and the frogs. And that's all I heard until a member of the family sold that property. that property. Now there's 20 houses in front of me, and now I can hear the music from the swimming pools at different times, no frogs, and now I've got anywhere from 40 to 60 cars coming out of a subdivision. But, that's change, and that happens, and that's whatever we all run into, and I understand that. And where these individuals are living too, I can remember driving down that piece of property where it was a cornfield, and there used to be cows out there, and I've seen them chop silage in those very same fields where their houses are. So that's change also, and I understand how, what we're talking about, and what we have out there today is no longer going to be the same as what we've got. So I've been put between a rock and a hard place, and I want everybody to understand that. But as I said, as a commissioner on both sides, there are ethics, and I have to remain transparent to what I've said. And in those training that we had there, I guess if you had to say that, as far as my vote is concerned in this, I'm stuck in the middle. And when you compare those rules, somebody can say something either way of what I'm going, whatever I can do. So, Mr. Chairman, I think when it comes my time to vote on this, I'll have to abstain on that vote. Because of the fact of, yes, I have to call Mr. Patel a friend, and, uh, I think that would possibly break some of our rules and regulations of what we have here.
Doug, I believe staff has some comments. Could you share those with us?
Well, I don't have comments per se unless there's questions. Um, I mean, our staff report from the last time hasn't really changed any. I mean, you can see the reasoning we had in our staff report, but I'm more willing to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Other questions?
Mine isn't really a question, neither mine is a statement. In all the training that Pettis has referenced, what I remember learning from that is, you know, as planning commissioners, we have to walk a fine line in terms of protecting the rights of the property owners versus the community versus what is good long-term planning. And so, it's always been my understanding that if a property owner brings us something that is zoned properly, and they want to develop their property in the spirit of how it's already zoned, we have to allow them to do that. But nobody's entitled to a rezoning. We look at rezoning with a much more critical eye, and we look at that with that planning eye. And so, as much as we do see there's commercial property in that area, it is all undeveloped currently. And so, I agree with Jim in that I think the time will probably come that that parcel may be appropriate for commercial zoning. I think at this point, it's premature. I do think it could be compatible with our comprehensive plan in terms that that's a 20-year plan, and that we see down the road that that could be the eventuality for that parcel, but I don't see that that's the automatic eventuality for that parcel today.
Now, could you explain what that commercial fringe is? I'm kind of looking at where the lines fall, and I see commercial highway, and then commercial fringe, and then everything else is residential.
Right. Commercial, yes, sir. Commercial fringe, now those designations that you're seeing, the RS10, those are there in green, I should say, those are City of Murfreesboro designations. Now, commercial fringe is kind of their middle-of-the-road zoning category, it's most closely related to what our commercial services is. Now, they're not apples-to-apples, I mean, you can't compare them that way, but, uh, that commercial highway, that's their more wide-open commercial zone, more akin to our commercial general zone. Uh, they also have a commercial local, I believe, CL, at least, which is like commercial neighborhood, yes. They have others scattered about, well, they have more than we do, but roughly speaking, that's just a rough comparison.
But could that fringe area be considered as kind of the transition back to that residential? Is that kind of the step down?
Well, it's from commercial highway, it is. I'm not sure if commercial fringe allows for residential uses. Uh, when I look at that, uh, you know, I mean, that little area right there is pretty much surrounded by city commercial zoning. You've got the commercial fringe, you've got the commercial highway on both sides of Highway 99. Um, and, you know, I would agree, I think it's only a matter of time, especially whenever the road, if the road, if this road is widened at some point, it's going to be widened to five lanes. I'm not sure the timeframe on that, but at some point, I think it's only a matter of time before these other ones, you know, follow suit.
I do have a question for Doug. On this, on this property, the lowest level of commercial use would be commercial neighborhood?
That's correct.
And then, commercial services is the next, and the commercial general is the next?
Yes.
So how would this application change had it come in as a commercial neighborhood application?
Well, uh, commercial neighborhood would allow for, forgive me, I'm looking at my ordinance here, commercial neighborhood, food and beverage. Excuse me a second, let me zoom down a little bit. Yes, commercial, I mean, commercial neighborhood would allow this. Now, commercial neighborhood also allows for residential uses, not just single-family, but it could be a duplex, triplex, it could be something like that, it could be a multifamily type, so... But would this allow for a restaurant use that they're, like they're talking about? The answer is yes, it would allow for that.
Of the uses mentioned by some of the public, would it, what would it exclude possible?
What it would exclude? Yes, well, yeah, things, well, let me just kind of compare between that and the commercial service, what they're asking for. Auto repair and servicing would only be allowed by special exception, okay? Wouldn't be allowed by right. Uh, let's see, construction, sales, and services would not be allowed in that zone. Indoor amusement and entertainment services would only be allowed by special exception in that zone. Uh, sorry, hold on a second.
What about the 24-hour markets and the liquor stores? Those are the two they were concerned about?
Well, as far as general retail, um, now liquor sales, alcohol sales, those kind of things would fall under general retail trade. That has a limit of 5,000 square feet in the commercial neighborhood, it does not exist in the commercial services zone. Now, as far as hours of operation and all that, the zoning doesn't dictate that, so that would really be up to the developer at that point. Something like a food service drive-in and drive-through would be allowed by special exception, uh, in this zone, where it's allowed by right in a commercial services zone, what they're asking for. Uh, again, anything, general retail trade more than 5,000 square feet would not be allowed in commercial neighborhood. Uh, you would still see medical services are allowed, group assembly would not be, transient accommodations, which could be like a hotel or something like that, would not be. Those are kind of the primary differences. Uh, but one of the bigger differences, again, it does allow residential, whereas the commercial services does not. So even the house that's there, even if they decided to keep the house and not develop it right away, even under commercial services, it would just be a non-conforming use. As long as it kept being a house, there's no problem there. In a commercial neighborhood zone, you wouldn't have that problem, it's a allowable use.
But to answer the question earlier, Doug, there's no reason why the applicant not go to the city and ask for annexation and get the same thing?
That's correct. Now, of course, they'd probably want access to sewer if they did that, but, you know, if sewer's not readily available, they may not. But to answer your question, yes, they could do that.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for being tardy, so, and this question may have been asked, so bear with me for a second. The surrounding residential homes, are any of those, Doug, to your knowledge, have any, has anybody proposed, brought plans to your knowledge to come up with the same commercial request? And, it'll zoom in, Mike. This corner that they're talking about, with the house on it, those are all currently RM-zoned along that street, across the street, right? There's no commercial zoning in there whatsoever. May be business in a house, perhaps, but there's, that would be the extent.
As far, let me just kind of take your questions one by one. To first, to answer your first question, have I spoken to anyone else about any of these other properties? No, I have not. Are there, is there any other county zoning right in this area? All the zoning that you're seeing right around this area that's commercially zoned is in the city. Yeah, that's not, those aren't county, those aren't county designations, the CF, the CH, those are all city zoning designations.
But, okay, but going, what we see in orange is residential?
That's correct. That's all residentially zoned. And that, right across the street, across Old Salem Road, and that's the fire hall right there.
Right.
And right to the north of that, you see this property zoned RS15, that's also residential zoning in the city.
Okay, so, at this point in time, at this snapshot in history, you have to go across New Salem to find commercial property? And that's the city?
There is some on the, right, there is, if you look at the map on your screen, what Mike is highlighting right in that area, that's also commercially zoned property in the city.
Right.
Right in there.
But right now, that subdivision, those streets are protected, they are in an RM-zone, and this would be the first application to change that zoning to commercial?
As far as those houses right there are concerned, I believe the question, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny, and a second.
May I interject, please? Mr. Lynch, it may be helpful for the record to state the basis for the denial, and if anybody needs to add, then to do so following that with an amendment.
Ready to request?
Reason for denial would be setting precedent in this, in this subdivision, and it's nothing else rezoned that way.
Incompatible zoning.
Yeah, we want to keep it like it is, residential.
Uh, can I ask one more question? On that same side of the road, commercial services is how far down on the...
You're talking in the county, you're talking?
Yes.
The Dollar General would be probably the closest one.
Want to take a look to see what surrounds that as well?
Well, you've got, right there, you've got the, of course, the Dollar General, and then the, of course, the existing retail that's there. There's a landscape, nursery, landscape business right behind it, Mike's highlighting in that area. I've heard some possible talk about a gas station on that Lot 2, right in there, some possible development on that. Now, of course, now, right to the south of that, you see that blue зoned property, institutional, that's the Rockville School Campus, right in that area. Now, going back the other direction, I don't think there's really much of anything from a commercial standpoint, in the county at least. Uh, there's, as you see, quite a bit of commercial zoning in the city, but as far as anything county-wise, I think you have to go good ways back in before it, yeah, you're talking probably those properties along New Salem Road that are between Case and Lane and River Rock, probably in that area. So, quite a ways on that side. Right, unless, yeah, from a county standpoint, again, now if you're talking city zoning, it's a lot closer.
Just for the record, I want to clarify my second, and this is what I think Commissioner Lynch was alluding to, is that the request is incompatible with the current zoning, the current county zoning in that area, and it's premature based on the lack of commercial development of other commercially zoned property by the city. So that's our reason for denial.
Thank you. Other discretion?
I think what Commissioner said, that's, that's just a standard in anything we do, and it, because if it's already residential, we really don't have to give this explanation so much for that, because it's already residential.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Other questions? Ready to vote? A yes vote would be a vote for denial, okay? All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. This is scheduled to be heard before the County Commission on Thursday, October 17th, in this courtroom. This body is a recommending body, the County Commission will make the final decision and determination. Once again, all of these rezoning requests we're hearing tonight will go before the County Commission on October 17th. I think the public hearings will be starting at 6:30 PM. The County Commission meets at 6 o'clock, but all of our rezoning requests will be heard at 6:30, and that will be, once again, Thursday, October 17th. Item 6A219-A018, Curtis Williamson, location is the intersection of Manchester Highway and East Gum Road. Commission District is 6th. County Commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 1.7 acres. Tax map is 151. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CG for commercial general. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, the applicant owns this property, excuse me, at 7650 East Gum Road, which is just to the east of the property, that's under consideration. Uh, if you look at the map that's on your screen right now, you can see that mini warehouse development right to the southeast of the subject property, that's the property that's at 7650 that the applicant also owns, uh, which is currently zoned commercial services. Uh, the applicant would like to rezon the subject property to commercial general in order to use this property for additional storage of boats, recreational vehicles, et cetera. Parking would be both opened and covered. Uh, there is a concept plan that has been included in your agenda packets, uh, there's also, Mike's going to go ahead and pull it up, yeah, right there. Again, that's, this is just a conceptual plan, it doesn't necessarily, may not necessarily look just like that. Parking with this type of a use, this isn't really a mini warehouse per se, because it's really just storage of vehicles, that falls under a different classification, which is automotive parking in a zoning ordinance, since it's the only use on the site. That is allowed only by special exception in a commercial general zone, so even if this is approved, they still would have to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals for this particular use. Access to the property is proposed to be from East Gum Road, as you can see. Uh, the concept plan does show a gate and kiosk for remote entry, again, being a concept plan, this isn't a final design. Uh, there are several things that are looking at that, that we would have some comments on if that's how it came in, but again, this is really just for conceptual purposes. Uh, any new or modified access points to East Gum Road would require County Highway Department approval. Uh, paved parking would also be a requirement for this particular use. Uh, commercial general properties, it's similar to a commercial services zone property, which would require a type-two buffer around the, surrounding the adjacent, excuse me, adjacent to residentially zoned properties, and our performance standards would also apply to that. Uh, this property is located along an urban-style corridor, which is identified as such in our comprehensive plan, which is Manchester Pike. Uh, that does anticipate non-residential uses. Uh, there is an existing convenience market to the south, that should be south, southwest of the property, excuse me, uh, right there along Manchester Pike, in addition to the mini storage facility right to the southeast. Our staff does anticipate a day where there'll be a more intense use that will occupy the property. Uh, we do feel the zoning request is appropriate, and we would recommend approval. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff at this time?
Aaron Phillips, Commissioner's, my name's Clyde Rountree, Huxley Steel Engineering. Uh, not much to add to the presentation, this is really an extension of his existing business, he's right across the street with the storage. Uh, he has a lot of, a lot of, um, different kind of vehicles that are stored there currently, and so, because of the proximity to the storage, this is a logical location for him to move to, and basically dogment what he's already doing right down the street. He's here, if there's any specific questions for him about any specifics, but the square on the building is basically a covered carport area that will allow for RVs to be stored without getting any kind of sun damage or weather damage to them, and for the most part, it's just a big open area that'll be used for vehicle storage altogether. If you have any questions for me, I'm available, or I'm available after the public hearing, if there may be any.
Clyde, does he already own this property?
That is a great question. I believe that is the case. Let me ask him. He didn't hear me. I'm sorry?
Gravel the property. Just gravel it.
It's gravel currently.
Oh, I.
Is it, I'm sorry, are you asking us to gravel?
It's going to gravel, not going to pave, but just gravel it, right?
Well, I think Doug said it's going to be required, that at some point it has to be paved.
It would have to be paved parking if he were to develop it.
Has to be paved.
Yes, sir.
He does own a chip, yeah.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you. This time I'll declare a public hearing open for 19-A018, Curtis Williamson. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, we're great on requiring HOAs, and all these people that live with HOAs can't park their boat, can't park their camper, can't, this is a great idea. It's going, I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion and a second to approve 19-A018 for Curtis Williamson. Any other questions?
Some level of screening required for the highway as well, as far as visibility?
Well, not so much from the highway. Now, they will have to do a certain amount of, you know, depending on the maneuvering area, they will have to do a certain amount of landscaping in there for the parking area, but as far as screening along the rights of way, that's not something that's required in the ordinance, just the residential zone lines.
Right away of 41 and looked like a salvage yard or something, and I don't, I mean, that property was, 40 years ago, was, had a country store on it, so I know it's been commercial in the past. I mean, that was old country store, just like the one across the road from it, but I'm not opposed to the rezoning, I'm just, just being right on that visible corner is a.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, right, I mean, they will have to submit a site plan for us to look at, especially with the covered storage area. I mean, that'll probably be large enough that it'll have to come for Planning Commission review. I think we could work with the applicant at that point as far as how the site is designed with those concerns in mind.
Know when the old store was torn down, they really cleaned that corner up, and it looks really nice, and it's open, and it's clean, and I would just like to see that managed that way. I don't mind the commercial, I just, like you said, we didn't want the gravel lot, and then everything just backed in there haphazardly and looked.
Right, yeah, it's not, it would have to be a paved lot, right, yeah.
Mike, can you zoom out a little bit and let us look at where this is at, exactly on Manchester Pike?
Sorry, the gremlins are working on me. There's the site here, and Eps Mill Interchange here, Gum Road, Elum Road up here, so about midway between Elum, where it crosses the interstate, and Eps Mill.
From this screen that we're looking at, can you turn on the satellite view? Okay, this is, this is my impassioned plea. I'm going to begin to sound like a broken record, because I've made this comment many, many times before, and I was hoping that we were going to, before something came up on this road, we were going to have time to get the comprehensive plan updated, and begin to discuss some overlay zones, some protection zones. One of the things that we're sacrificing with all of our development is the rural character of our communities. Highway 41 is one of the oldest roads in the state, and so, it concerns me greatly that we're going to begin to develop, I thought it was going to be Amazon-style warehouses. In this case, it's a mini storage, and Lee kind of alluded to the same concern that I have, and that is protecting the character of that road, protecting the character of that neighborhood. You know, in my mind, that is a very important stretch of road, and so, my plea is, is that we not rezone something prematurely before we've had a chance to really look at what's the proper way to preserve that rural character, because, like we talked about before, if, you know, if they would put in, you know, if we could mandate, you know, certain very strict buffering, things like that, they could protect at least the visual buffer, then behind the trees, or behind the whatever, you know, then it may be time to let some of those things develop, but I just think we're sacrificing an awful lot that we can never get back when you give up that rural character, that rural feel, and so, when we had talked about doing this, part of the plan in updating the comprehensive plan this year, I thought was going to be, we were going to fold in discussing certain areas like this throughout the county that are historic in nature, that do, you know, give us that flavor of who we are, what our identity is as a community, and so, I know this still has to go before BZA, so if it makes it through here, I'll probably go to BZA and give this same talk, but that's what I would encourage you, is to, let's think about what we're giving up in supporting this rezoning.
And in all fairness, this was identified in the plan as a commercial node area.
Corridor, yes, sir. Long corridor.
And with the BZA, I mean, going back to what Rhonda was just saying, with the BZA, I mean, they would have the ability to place additional conditions on there, so, I mean, that's very well, a point well taken.
I would charge some things along the time, and I just didn't want it to turn into something like that.
Right, no, I understand where you're coming from. I think there is, since there's another layer of approval, should this go, be approved through the whole process, then I think, yeah, I think the BZA does have that ability to place reasonable conditions upon approval.
And that's all I'm asking for, is reasonable. I do know this, like I said, this is identified as a commercial node, and I'm perfectly fine with that because of the location.
Yeah, and the applicant and his representative is present, so they're hearing everything that you all are saying, so, I mean, they'll plan accordingly, I'm sure.
I just want to go on record here as saying, while I'm not opposed to this use for this property, I share Lee and Commissioner Allen's concerns completely with the buffering, the setbacks from the road, the fence that's going to be across the front, and just the look of a building and a great big parking lot out there. I think we need to do something to preserve that, or make that, give that the rural character that it should, that it deserves out there. What are the requirements for buffering and fencing across the front and that sort of thing? Maybe you can ease my mind a little bit, or do we make recommendations to the BZA?
No, I don't think you necessarily need to make any recommendations to the BZA. I mean, I'll, if this gets approved through the whole process, I'll pass on these concerns to my Assistant Director, who handles that board, but, I mean, to answer your question regarding buffering and screening along the frontages, again, the ordinance doesn't require any of that, and the big reason it doesn't require necessarily buffering along the frontages is because a lot of businesses like the visibility, so, you know, but at the same time, I think the Board of Zoning Appeals can place reasonable conditions as far as the setbacks, as far as some additional screening along the frontage, you know, just to make it more attractive. I think there's something to be said about that.
But unique with this mini storage, I'm sorry, Jim, unique with this mini storage is it's two separate lots, so the main office will still be where it's located now.
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
They would still have to go there to.
Yes.
Duct the business, so to speak.
Correct, correct.
They'll still have to come back before us for site plan review.
Yes, they will.
So, I know we have fences as part of our ordinance now. What does it say, fat fences on commercial property with this type of zoning in, on the front, across the front?
Again, it doesn't make any specific requirements for that. You're talking like for screening purposes and things, or?
Well, whether it be screaming, screening, or security, I mean, are they just going to be allowed to come across the front with a chain-linked fence, or, you know?
Well, the way the.
Brick wall?
Yeah, the, well, again, the way that, we have separate fence guidelines. We like to see, remember, we discussed this, I guess it's been a good couple of years now, but we discussed some changes to our code for fences, specifically in residential areas, about having a certain amount of transparency along the frontages of property, just from a public safety standpoint, you know, if somebody has to call for an ambulance or fire or whatnot, that they're able to get there and see what's going on before accessing the scene, so there is a certain amount of visibility that we want to see in that situation. So, but, I mean, I think there's the ability to look at that and make recommendations, you know, for different levels of that.
Recognize the applicant again.
Reason I'm back up is we have a few answers to a few of those questions. Mr. Williamson does desire to match the existing fence that's already on the facility he has, which is a brick column with kind of a metal fence in between, so it's a really kind of a more of an upscale look, and then to go with intermittent street trees along the way as well. He'd like those to be inside the fence, just so he can protect some of his view corridors, but you can kind of see, he's pretty much mimicking what's already out there, what he's already done, so it's not really a, you know, it's not a chain link, and it's not something that looks kind of salvage yard-ish. He just wants to keep it in the same character as he currently has, so the only thing I want to qualify, this is really for you, Ms. Allen, as far as that rural character, I mean, he's going to provide, you know, trees that would mature and give you that kind of, that kind of look, but it's a little bit broad to go, you know, how do we define that? Right now, he has no anticipation of doing a lot of low-level landscaping, but he definitely wants to put, you know, trees that would go into mature trees and become like a shade-looking tree with a, you know, with a nice-looking decorative fence, so that's what we know right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? We'll get another shot at this as it relates to.
For the site, if it were to get through the rest of the process with the Board of Commissioners and then the BZA ultimately. General, yes.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any other questions? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This also will be heard on October 17th at the full County Commission meeting. 6A319-A019, John Wayne Smith, 2378 New Salem Highway. Commission District is 7. County Commissioner is Mike Kusch. Size of the site is approximately 1 acre. Tax map 114. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is for Commercial Services, CS. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to Commercial Services. The Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners have considered and approved three other properties along this stretch of New Salem Road, namely 2310, 2328, and 2348, which you can see are, and then the property on the corner, which is, was vacant, but, so, you can see those properties there have already been rezoned. This one's just one removed from those other properties that you see. The information that was provided by the applicant, as you see in your agenda packets, he'd like to support retail, neighborhood-supporting retail by repurposing the existing structure and developing attractive retail buildings. They'd like to enhance the neighborhood by offering low-impact services while being sensitive to the quality of life of essential parcels. Again, this is from the materials that the applicant submitted. They did list some examples of appropriate services and some that they feel wouldn't be as appropriate, as you can see listed in your agenda packets under the staff report. Now, I will say, as I've said in other applications, and the ones that were, a couple that came before this, that whatever's allowed in the zoning is allowed, you know, just because they may not want those particular uses. If somebody were to come in after the property's zoned, and they were to sell the property, and somebody wanted to put that use in, we couldn't just say, no, you can't put that there, so I just want to make sure that that's clear to the Planning Commission. This property does have access to New Salem Road, Highway 99. This is a state road, so T dot approval would be required for any new or modified access drives. The applicant did submit a concept plan. It's really more of just kind of a generic plan. As you can see, actually, I think this is the same plan that was submitted with some of the earlier applications, think they just got a copy of it and kind of tailored it really to more what they were looking at. Of course, now, what you're seeing here is conceptual. You can see there's no, there's no area set aside for soil sites, there's no area set aside for buffering necessarily, but, again, this is conceptual. If nothing else, again, just gives an idea of the direction that the applicant might be hitting with that. Type 2 buffer would be required along all residentially zoned properties, which now would be three sides, not so much along Highway 99, and performance standards would also apply. This is consistent with the recommendations made in the county's comprehensive plan. Commercial zoning is located directly across the street within the city limits of Murfreesboro and in very close proximity to the county's own properties, which we just talked about, just a property removed. Mike will bring up the city zoning, just for your information there. New Salem Road in this area is currently being widened to five lanes. I know that very well, because I drive by this practically every day, going back to where I live in the area, so they're making good progress, but it's, this will be a five-lane road right through this area. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Staff would recommend approval of this request.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff at this time? The applicant available?
My name's John Smith. I'm at 2378 Highway 99. I'm not going to repeat everything this gentleman just said, but I do want to add that I have a pending contract, pending this rezoning, with the Montessori preschool. They're going to use the structure as it is, minimal changes to the outside, maybe a little bit to the carport. The biggest change will be access into the property. They're looking at maybe either widen the driveway that's there, or making a circle drive in the front, and adding a few parking places. That's really all I have. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Smith? Thank you. This time I'll declare a public hearing open for item 19-A019, John Wayne Smith. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
My wife and I, I'm Ursula Harrison, we live at, my wife and I live at 2465 Foxcroft Road, immediately behind Mr. Smith, and I do not raise any objection to this proposal. My only concern is that we're losing a good neighbor, and he's been back there a long time, and we hate to see him go. The only thing I would like to ask for clarification would be, you mentioned a type of buffer that would be provided, and I'd just like some clarification about the type of buffer that would be provided between this commercial space and our residential space, which is right behind it.
I'll answer that now. Yes, please, no, I can. I can answer that question for you. This would require what's called a Type 2 buffer. In the county, there are three levels of buffer, Type 1, 2, and 3. 2 is kind of in the middle. The minimum width would be 15 feet, and that's if they use a solid visual screen, like a privacy fence or wall or something like that, could be an earthen berm even, something to that effect. In absence of that, if they just decided to use plantings only, they would be required to have a 30-foot buffer along the back of the property without any kind of a fence or anything like that. So, 15-foot with reduced plantings and a solid visual screen, or 30-feet with just plantings, and there'd be more required plantings if there's no visual screen.
Thank you, Doug. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed for item number 19-A019, John Wayne Smith. Commissioners? Commissioners?
That's used in the existing structure, and that's...
Well, now, that's, that's, that's brand-new, that's a larger structure.
That's what I was...
Right. Now, and I had to look, because there was nothing about a Montessori school mentioned. That is a permitted use in commercials, education, educational use is a permitted use, so that's fine. Now, they'll have different parking requirements, they'll have different septic requirements. I mean, a lot of that's going to depend on how, that's going to factor into how large of a structure they can provide, you know, unless they go with the sewer, but if they do that, they'd have to request annexation into the city.
Level of remodel and any additional parking or driveway configuration, would that come back to us for site plan review, or is that staff?
If it's just remodeling of the house and site improvements, it might just be a staff review. Now, if they wanted to tear down the structure and start anew, then yeah, that would come before you.
Okay, because that's why I was wondering, the site, the concept plan didn't seem to match what was just told, and I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page.
Right. Well, and again, the concept plan, I think you just borrowed from a previous application, and, I mean, when you look at the concept plan, the shape of the property, they don't match, so it's, it just gives them an, gives you an idea of what he might be thinking about.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move for the approval. We have a motion and a second to approve, 19-A019 for Mr. Smith. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This also will go before the full county commission on October 17th. 684-19-A017, Tayslundy for Source Land. Location is on Rucker Road, county commission, district is number 6. The commissioner is Joe Frank Jernigan. Size of the site is approximately 170 acres. Tax map 150. Existing zoning is RM. Proposed zoning is PUD for planned unit development. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This application should look pretty familiar to you. This was considered at last month's night meeting, and then again during our day meeting, really not considered for a vote, but really more as a work session, just for you to take a look at some of the proposed changes that they had made, based on the comments they heard at the public hearing. Since that, the first public hearing, since that time, we have, the staff has met with the applicant, and they have provided a revised pattern book, which is on your iPads. We also have a copy that we'll put up on the screen if need be. The applicant is present. I think their representative will probably want to make a presentation on the changes that were made. Just to give you just a quick overview, this item, as you recall, was deferred to address the concerns raised during the last meeting that we had, the night meeting, which included traffic flow through the subdivision, the appearance of the houses, affordability issues, and possible rental of the properties. We did meet with the applicant's design team to discuss these issues and possible changes that could be made. The applicant has submitted a revised concept plan and pattern book, again, that you have in your agenda packets on your iPads. You see that there is a roundabout now on the extension of Rucker Road. Mike can just kind of highlight that on there, where that is. The applicant has also added larger lots along the extension of Rucker Road, and there is a breakdown in your agenda materials and the staff report as far as the number of lots, the materials breakdown, minimum house square footage, et cetera. There was also several concerns that staff had brought up regarding the traffic study with a development that we know is coming into the area regarding especially the, the new elementary school, which will be constructed in that area before too long. So Mike has looked at that. I'll let him kind of make some additional comments on that. Also, I'll go ahead and just turn it over to him.
Okay. All right. We asked that the traffic engineer factor in the trips that will be heading towards the new school site. I'm calling it Plainview Schools, gets down to the south of Buchanan Estates, down in this area right in here, and they, they did adjust their trips, the morning trips heading out to the new school sites down to the south. They've looked at all the developments in the area, and they've factored those in. They, let's see. They divided up the traffic, which way it's currently going, what it's projected to grow to, and then how this development will impact it. And they're proposing to make some signage improvements on these curves on Rucker Road. And then also, their, this development, if you recall, is called Rucker Landing in this area right here. Let me turn the area on, so you might be able to see a little better. This is Rucker Landing here, and then Davenport, Davenport Station is right here. Davenport Station is proposing to install a traffic signal with the next section that comes online at Rucker Road and 231. Rucker Landing will be adding a dedicated right-turn lane coming out of Rucker Road heading north on Shelbyville Highway. Another improvement this development is proposing is to add a dedicated right-turn lane, northbound right-turn lane onto Rucker Road, which will need to be coordinated with all three improvements, the traffic signal at, for Davenport Station, the north right-turn lane on Rucker Road going on 231, and then their right-turn lane onto Rucker, Rucker Road. So they do say that some of the traffic following existing traffic patterns will use County Farm Road, and that, yes, I assume to go to the Joby Jackson to the north. And if y'all know this area where it crosses the railroad tracks, that's a challenging, very challenging, because you lose sight of the road as you're going over the railroad tracks. I personally avoid that, because I don't like going over that, but they, they assume that some traffic will be using that County Farm Road to snake up to get to Joby Jackson, to either get to 231 or the interchange at 24. So we will see some traffic on there. So, other than that, we find that the traffic study is in order. They've accounted for the new growth, the traffic patterns for the new school site to the southeast, and the improvements at the Rucker and 231, excuse me, a little bit farther to the west, and then the signage improvements on Rucker for these curves.
Mike, also, that intersection you were talking about at the railroad crossing, if a person turns right there, they have that one-lane bridge to cross to get to Elam as well?
Oh, yes, yeah, that's, yeah, the Elam, yes. County Farm Road, if you know where Community Care is, which is right here, you can either go County Farm, cross the railroad tracks, take a left over the railroad, or you can take a right and go Elam Road, and you cross a one-lane, low one-lane bridge. So both challenging routes, but they're currently used by the local residents, and they felt that it would project towards more residents using that route. But, like I said, I avoid that route.
Either one.
Yeah, either one, yes.
Other questions at this point?
Mike and Doug, what did, what's the update with city council on tapping into the sewer?
They did approve it. Yes, sir.
That sewer, one that's subject to sewer assessment for each house, or do you know?
Yes.
Off a top, mate. But it's in the thousands of dollars each house.
Of the tap fee, in addition to the tap fee, or is that...
I think it's all worked in. They, you pay a certain assessment fee and then a tap fee on top of that, so there's the straight tap fee.
I think we've established that County Farm Road, I'm familiar with that, how bad that is, but on Rucker between there and Shelbyville Highway, is there a classification for that road, or the, or its capacity, or what kind of condition is that road in?
I mean, besides the 90-degree turns, you do have that one railroad crossing at, on Rucker. It, in my opinion, is nowhere near the County Farm crossing, but it's, you know, it's, it, there is a little bit of a rise, and it is signalized for the, for the train crossing. There are no arms on it, or at least this image from 2012 indicates. I don't believe there are arms on it now, but there are lights for the train crossing. So there, like, there's a little bit of a rise right there. It's, it's in good shape. It's heavily traveled. I would say it's probably a community collector. Now, Doug, I think alluded to the long-term transportation tran, plan, where they are proposing to extend that new road through, and I should use a different map, not my Google Earth. They're going to extend this road, and it'll hook back around and come back into the wayside Kind of make this movement, I believe I do have, kind of follow this route, but it'll come down and tie into wayside here. And that is kind of seen in this color. Phase 1 will be built with this first phase.
Mike, the PUD that we approved before you get to the railroad track, is that progressing?
Yes, they, we've had the pre-construction meeting for Rucker Landing, Phase 1A and 1B. 1A is just, I think, seven lots. Originally, we're all going to be conventional septic system. Phase 1B will build the step system and have a road network inside and recirculate sand filters and whatnot.
I remember some of the objections some of those people had, that when they come out of some of those other subdivisions before you get to the highway, they can't turn back toward the school. They, they go around, and to get to the school, they make the loop, cross railroad track, take the loop and come back around, come to the school that way.
Yes.
For the traffic.
Right.
To turn left toward the school, and then get to 231.
With the traffic signal, they'll be able to turn left.
Yeah.
They'll have a dedicated right and left turn lane and through on Rucker Road, and then the traffic signal will allow the left-turn movements.
The applicant available? Do you have some comments and maybe a presentation?
Thank you, Chairman. Matt Taylor from SEC, representing the applicant on the project. I believe that Doug did a good job going through most of the changes, but I will try to go through and hit those again, and do appreciate you giving me the feedback at the past two planning commissions. And so some of the changes I'll go over are a combination between those. One of the large things that we heard was to delineate and segregate, or maybe segregate's not the right word, but add more and a variety of lot sizes. And so what we've done is, inside this PUD, we've set forth three different minimum lot sizes, and those range from a width of 45 up to over to 70 feet, and those are minimums. Associated with each of those, we've set forth a different minimum home size, which I think is what we talked about at the last workshop, and those go respectively from 1,300 to 1,600 and 1,800 as minimum home sizes. Along with each one of those lot sizes and minimum home sizes, we've set forth minimum architectural requirements for each. And so on the smallest, we have maintained the vinyl. On the medium size, we've set all masonry fronts, and then on the largest size, which will be concentrated along the Rucker Lane extension, we've done three sides masonry on those. In addition, we've also delineated where the green spaces would be. We added some green space, so that every resident here is within five minutes walking distance of a amenity or green area. Those amenities will be playgrounds, pools. We're also trying to incorporate a canoe or kayak put in on the Stones River in the northeast quadrant. I can't guarantee that. It may become more of an unofficial put-in there, just because of the restrictions with T-deck and the Corps, but we would like to achieve one of those as an amenity for our residents. And then we'll also have one or two open spots of just kind of passive play area. One thing we found on the smaller lots is the kids need a place to go play wiffle ball or flag football, and so those kind of open spaces provide that ability. We also, as Mike said, we've also committed to a right-turn lane on the northbound side of 231 to complement that full intersection improvement there. We added the roundabout. We also added some buffering along the rear of the homes that butt up to the existing Rucker Lane, just to the south of where the new Rucker Lane will come in, near Old Mill, the Elam Mill Road there. We've also taken the sidewalks along the southern finger, if you will, that goes back down to existing Rucker at Wayside, and we've shown those, instead of following the roadway exactly, we've shown those to kind of curve in and out of the open spaces. We do not have any lots on those green, in that green area, and we've got some fairly nice mature trees through there, so we wanted to take advantage. Instead of having a duplicate sidewalk and a trail, we've tried to bring that outside the right-of-way, make that a much more intimate, nice space. And then we moved all the 70-foot lots along Rucker. You'll see those in the orange right there. And then stepped back from that, so the next ring of housing next to that would be the 55s, and then go, then step back to the 45s as you get away from the main roadway there. And then I think there were some concerns about this being an all-rental neighborhood. We've done some research on that, and we're working through the exact verbiage of that, but we're committed so that this thing is not an all-rental neighborhood. We're just looking at the verbiage from a legal standpoint, so it doesn't put the VHA or the, or the FHA or the VA loans in danger. And so, other than that, I think that we've tried to address every, all the concerns that we heard, but I'll be happy to entertain questions or other comments.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, Matt. In the concept that you sent me before the pattern book was done, it was 431 lots, it's now 433. Where are those two additional lots? Do you know what part, which level is at?
I believe it's in the northeast quadrant there, and I think that was purely a miscount by somebody at the office.
Okay, no problem. I just wanted to, the, what I had in the staff comments was 431. I saw there was a couple of extra lots, I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page.
Question from Matt. Matt, what are the side setbacks on the 45-foot lots?
All of it is, everything in here has a seven-and-a-half-foot side setback, so at least 15 feet between all structures. And one thing I did want to point out, you know, the PUD requirements ask us to set forth a minimum house size. You know, not every house in here is going to be 1,300 on the 45-foot lots. You know, we intend, we envision those to range from 1,300 to about 1,900 square feet, and then the medium lot size to range from about 1,600 to about 2,600 square feet in size, and then the largest lot size, those homes will range from about 1,800 to about 2,800 square feet in size. And so we, we envision the price points in here ranging from about $240,000 on the low end to about $310,000 on the high end.
Mr. Chairman? Matt, just one other que, um...
Yes, sir.
I know we had talked about 40-foot front setbacks at one time. I thought you had made that change.
Uh, that should have been, so, yeah, we were going to do the 40-foots along the 70-foot lots that fronted on Rucker Lane, yes, sir.
Okay, so you want the 40-foot setbacks along Rucker, but 35 on the others?
Yes.
Okay, that'll need to be changed in the pattern book. It's 35 all the way through.
Other questions of the applicant? Total number of lots?
It's 433, Chairman.
433, and the number of larger lots?
So it's, there's 44 of the 70-foot lots, 98 of the 55-foot wide lots, and two 800... So it's, there's 44 of the 70-foot lots, 98 of the 55-foot wide lots, and 280 of the 45-foot wide lots.
44, 90, and what?
98 and 280.
Those, those numbers you just said, if you said 280, that would only be 430, I'm sorry, 422. It says on the, what you gave me was 289, where the, the smallest one's the 45-foot lot size.
89.
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but like I said, that's, that still reflects, even that reflects 431. So there's two lots somewhere.
Okay. I'll, well then I can't exactly tell you that, Doug. Because the, the chart I had was the other, so.
Roughly two-thirds of the lots are the smaller lots.
Yes, sir.
Any questions of the applicant at this time? Okay. Stay close, Matt.
We, we did approach them, this area that goes down to Wayside Drive is outside the sewer assessment district, so it can't be served by city sewer. But we approached them and said, hey, that might be a good location for a fire ambulance hall, something like that, county asset. They agreed to it in principle, but we found out from our EMA director that, that did not fit in our first responder plan, their larger plan. So they, they couldn't use that area, but they did make that available to us as a county asset. And, and, but, you know, the, the city would have to have us go to allow a sewer extension, but they would allow that for a community function, community use in that area. So, but that fell through, but they, I just wanted to mention that they did offer that and did agree to that at the, at the time, so.
Very good, thank you. This time I'll declare the public hearing open for item number 19-A017, Taze Lundey for Source Land.
Hello, my name is Donald Jernigan. I live at Christiana Hoover's Gap Road, approximately four-and-a-half, five miles from this subdivision, but I farm right across the road. And I've been in the community for, this is my 50th year. So I have learned to accept change. But let me talk to you just a little bit about this change. This change is over 400-plus homes on approximately 170 acres that is not totally usable. We have a gas line running through this 170 acres. We have a road system that is crowded at the best due to subdivisions already developed around it with much larger lots. We're talking about, I don't know how many lots of 45 feet, but as I was thinking about this, as I was hauling hay the other day, I was thinking, 45 feet, that's two houses between home plate and first base on a baseball field. And then I looked at my hay barn and I decided that that was two houses plus a fourth of another yard. And then when I read or heard about a setback of seven-and-a-half feet, I realized that the wall of the third house would fall within that range. Now, I got to thinking, well, these homes, they're going to be starter homes and we've got to have starter homes. I started in one with kids. And I know that the school system counts about, for every starter home, about 1.8 kids per house. Isn't that pretty close? With 1.8, then I think about the schools. Yes, we're building a school in the Christiana area. And we're building that school approximately six miles or so from the subdivision. They're working on roads now, but the map that I saw just a few weeks ago at the Christiana Volunteer Fire Department that the road department brought out did not have Wayside Road or Rucker Road included in that. It had Els Mill Road, Miller Road, Sledge Road, Plainview Road included. Now, we've got Christiana Elementary already crowded. We've got Buchanan Elementary already crowded. We've got Barfield Elementary already crowded. And we're two years away from starting, getting in the new school at best. I've accepted subdivisions, but timeliness means a lot. There's pluses and minuses to everything we do. The developer is going to try to emphasize the pluses. Well, I'm going to sit, stand up here and ask you to think about the minuses. And the minuses are, with that many homes, even in phases, it's going to put us in a more desperate situation to get things done. Commissioners have funded education very well in this county. Expectations are high, but there's only, a five-gallon bucket only holds five gallons. You can keep pouring in it, but it's going to run out somewhere. And that's what we're looking at. I'm not asking you to turn down a subdivision. I'm asking you to look at lot sizes realistically. I'm asking you to look at the timetable of the school system in trying to help several Jevonport Station, yes, they're building. Buchanan Estates, yes, they're still building. Long Creek Subdivision, yes, they're still building. So why do we want to throw this one right in the mix at this particular time? I have several notes here of just things that I, nothing sophisticated, just as I was sitting and doing my work, I'd think of something and then I'd write it down. I haven't told you anything that you don't already know. I'm just wanting you to think about it in a little different light. I appreciate your time, and I'm glad I'm not in your position.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I live at 2634 Rucker Road. I've been there for 32 years. Rucker Road is a two-lane road with no shoulders, steep sides, and 690-degree turns within a one-and-a-half-mile span.
Ma'am, if you could speak up just a little bit.
Sorry. Do you want me to?
Put that down.
Down? I thought it was right. Better? 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 Sorry. Okay, as I was saying, Rucker's a two-lane road, no shoulders, steep sides. It has 690-degree turns within a mile-and-a-half span. Being a rural area means that there are trucks towing trailers, there are tractors and other farm machinery on the road, as well as cars. And we are having also to contend with dump trucks and other types of heavy commercial vehicles on a daily basis. 433 houses would mean practically 866 additional vehicles if you average two cars per house. The road can't handle what it has now, much less an additional almost 1,000 cars. This development is not compatible with the surrounding property and area, which I think is something that's supposed to be insured. Current and adjacent zoning are for medium-density residential with current and adjacent uses being residential, single-family, or undeveloped. These proposed houses are small vinyl constructions on equally small lots. I live on 12 acres. I have a neighbor on 15 acres, and we're not the only ones out there. It's acreage property. That's why we're out there. The entrances to this development are in dangerous locations. Part of the property in this development is in floodplains of both the Stones River and Long Creek. We already have flooding issues out there. The provision of street stubs for possible future construction is very concerning to me. I work at Christiana Elementary School. Our schools are already overcrowded. I drive Rucker Road on an average twice daily. It's made more dangerous by the increase in vehicle traffic from overdevelopment of this area. Our infrastructure is strained now. Solve these problems first, don't add to them, and please respect the quality of life of those who actually live out there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
What if I didn't use this? Could you hear me?
Up a little.
Hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a pretty powerful voice.
Well, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I was just going to say, I'm sorry, the reason you need to talk into the mic is maybe not so much for the ear, but if you don't, TV can't, the TV can't hear you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me address you. I appreciate this very much. What I have to say adds to what the community has already presented with Mr. Jernigan and the nice lady in front of me from Christiana Middle School, oh, Primary School. My name is Angie McFarland-Klino. I'm a longtime resident of Rutherford County. I own the property on 5942 West Scum Road. It is, I own a pick-your-own, I own 35 acres on West Scum Road. I have a pick-your-own blueberry patch, pesticide-free blueberries, Tennessee agriculture-protected crop. We, my husband and I, well, my property parallels RM15000400 against the middle fork of Stones River. My husband and I, over 35 years ago, got permission to build a personal dam to water these seven acres, 4,000 blueberry bushes. They no longer give permission to build personal dams, but we got permission from the state of Tennessee. I have an overhead water system coming out of the river because of the dam we built. And that dam parallels is right there near RM15000400. I use this water for watering the blueberries, but I also use it for freeze protection, just like the crops in Florida with the oranges. One of my concerns, I parallel this largest building site, 00400. I parallel, I have about 4,000 to 5,000 feet of river back there. So I parallel a large portion of that site, building site that runs along the middle fork of the Stones River. My concern is, in addition to our community concerns, is that if my dam is damaged, or if my watering system with those overhead sprayers is damaged, I could lose my business because it would not be financially feasible to re, build a dam, even if I could get permission. Some of the blasting and the moving of the ground underneath when you're building that many homes, that ground's going to move around. I'm very concerned about that. So in addition to our community concerns, I wanted to share with you that information because twice I've had things going on behind me and the people who are doing the work were never informed that my farm and my dam and my blueberries and my watering system was back there and how much this would impact that. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I'm Russ Wengler. I live on Wayside Road. Let's start with the traffic. That's going to be a big issue. At, I live one mile exactly from where they're proposing to Dadee and out from Rucker. So... So the school that they're gonna build on Hoover's Gap down that way, the traffic sleuth, call them sleuths. They didn't mention anything about the traffic from this subdivision going through Wayside. That's, I'm four miles, three miles from the interstate, so that'd put me four miles, that'd put the entrance to the subdivision four miles from I-24. So who is gonna take, when all these houses are built, and you got all these kids and parents, they've gotta get out, go to school, go to work. Who is gonna go Rucker to County Farm down Eglom Road to go to Hoover's Gap? You're gonna take the shortest route. That would be Wayside to Plainview, Wayside to Sledge is the way they're gonna run. They're not gonna do the other, the other route. I mean, that's just not sensible. But the thing about it is, we've already got problems from the people that use the GPS, the, the big rigs. They come from 231, it sends them around to Wayside, Hoover's Gap, and they get hung up all the time. So now you're gonna have big rigs, lost, can't get nowhere, stuck in the corner of the road, and then you've got all this other traffic. And I know, I don't even go Rucker Road to 231 in the morning. School time, you might as well hang it up because you can't get out. And the people that live in the community, they don't travel it either. They go the interstate. They, they'll drive three miles out of the way just so to avoid it. It's the same thing as 41 Highway and Eglom Road now. If you ever up there in the mornings, you can't get out. You'll sit there in traffic for 30 minutes, and that's exactly what you do on 231. I've got big trucks. I own a small business, but I've got two trucks, three trucks at the most, and we leave every morning at 7:00. And that's why I go the interstate. And that's the same way that these other people are gonna have to go, is the interstate. They're gonna have to go straight up Wayside, or they're gonna have to go through Cannon Estates so they can get commuting. It's just, I don't know why, why y'all think they're gonna go up Rucker and County Farm? I mean, why even try to throw that, that traffic home? And let's not even talk about, that's 800 cars minimum. When you start building bigger houses, that's fine. But you're gonna have at least, I know, probably 800, there's two, what? There are two-bedroom homes, the small? At least. So, yeah, you're gonna have at least three cars. I mean, eventually, I mean, if the family grows and stays there. So you got all that, but then when you get, when you go up to 18, 20, 800, that's a minimum four cars. They're gonna have kids. I mean, they're gonna grow up, they're gonna get a vehicle. That's what we all do, what we all did. But the thing about it is, is traffic. I don't care about the subdivision. I, I care about it as long as bigger lots, bigger homes. We got enough people in our community. I mean, there's always room for a few more, but I didn't buy out in the country to farm to have a lot more. I can handle a few more people. That's what I like, is few. Few is better for me. But I farm, I raise cattle, I haul hay, I show cattle, and you're gonna see my trucks on that road, my stock trailer, me hauling hay, and I ain't gonna stop. So you, if they build it, they just need to know that that's what we do out there. It's just like this lady here, Rhonda, I mean, she's concerned about maintaining 41. Well, what about our rural roads and the community? Let's try to preserve just a little bit of that for a while. I mean, give it another 10, 15 years. Till when we can decide, okay, I'm gonna retire. When I get retired and I ain't have to worry about getting out every day to commute to go to work, I'll stay home. It might be different. But we've already, I've got people now building all around me. I mean, I'm having to accept that now. But the thing about it is, Wayside Road, is keep in mind that Wayside Road is gonna be the shortest route to the school. I don't care what you say and what the traffic sleuths have come up with, Wayside Road is gonna be the quickest route to, to the school. So that's my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners.
Doug, question for you. In your file, we have on page, I think, 43 of 40, no, 44 of 45, we have a spreadsheet that has a list of subdivisions and density and lot widths. Are you familiar with that one?
Yes, sir, I'm looking at it right now.
Something you can pull up?
That's some, uh, it's, should be on the agenda packet. We can pull up the agenda packet, yeah. Just give us a second, we have to, we didn't, we need to pull that up. We got it on the screen.
Something you prepared, or did the applicant?
This is something I put together.
Okay. Can you enlarge that at all, Michael? This, this particular subdivision is not listed in this chart.
No, sir, these are all approved subdivisions in here.
Focus on the, one of the columns in the middle, and that is density, um, units per acre. And you feel, look at these, you'll see that they all kind of hover around the low twos. There are some fours in Davenport Station and Valley Farms, but you'll kind of see they're in that range if, if the commission will look at that. This particular development, if you do the math, is 2.55. So it's kind of right in there, a hair on the heavy side. But let's go to the far column on the right, minimum lot width. Likes to play with the mouse quite a bit. All right, scroll over, Mike. All right. The far right column is minimum lot width in feet. Show me, with the exception of Clear Creek, which has a density of only 1.3 houses, anywhere that has something less than 45 feet, which is what's proposed now.
There's not. I mean, based on, based on that, based on this chart, there's not any, right?
This, this is cutting new ground on lot width.
For the 45-foot lot step proposing, that's correct, yes, sir.
Our smallest is 55, and it, I mean.
Right, now generally, yeah, now, let me, yeah, let me just say, generally, lot width now, when you're, there's two different ways. There's lot frontage, which is generally is required to be 50 feet, lots along the road. Lot width is measured at the front setback line. In the RM zone, that's typically 75 feet.
But these lots appear to all to be perfect rectangles.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Five feet.
Right, for those smaller lots, that's correct.
Right, the 289 smaller lots.
Correct.
Right. So this is, we're breaking new ground. We've never approved anything that's.
Right, that's correct.
And most of the counties around us have a 55 minimum lot width. Trust me, they do.
Okay, I'll say, I haven't researched that part of it, but yes, sir.
So from day one, I've been against this because of the narrow lot widths. And I'm gonna continue to be against this because of the narrow lot widths. I do not want to set a precedence in Rutherford County that we're gonna allow 45-foot lot widths. Now, that's the number-one reason I'm gonna vote against it. Number two is infrastructure. We're overloading it. Do a traffic study, a traffic shed study, maybe, and maybe that's what we should propose, a traffic shed study. Do you think we'll be able to develop 433 houses in a traffic shed study? Who believes it could get full development? Not me. Infrastructure's not gonna handle it. So you can kind of understand where I'm leaning here, but.
Other comments? There was a lot of discussion the last time. This came before this commission, and I'll, I try my best to refrain from the discussion and, and allow the commission to be the commission. This is kind of a passion of mine, and I've seen these developments in areas that I, I don't like where they've gone. I don't like what they've become. And I think some of our conversation last month was, give us a mixture. And they've done that. They give us a mixture. But my interpretation of what I was envisioning, and this one is almost a total reversal of what I really was expecting. And we didn't give any guidance, really, so it's not the developer's fault. But I kind of agree with what Mike is saying. We're plowing new ground, and I think we've gone PUDs so often in the past that I think it's a good use of our land. But when you put this many houses on a piece of land this size, I'm not sure it's the best use of the land that we have left in Rutherford County. And I've got a concern about that, and will continue to have a concern about that. Not necessarily for what this development would be 10 years from now, but what this development could look like 20 years from now and 30 years from now. And as we said last month, go down to a development that is almost identical to this in Laverne and see what that looks like. And that's my concern. And it's almost exactly what Commissioner Kush is saying. So that's my two cents worth, and thank you for listening to it. Any other questions or comments or motions?
I just had, I had one thing I wanted to address for Mr. Jernigan's comments regarding the schools. When I joined the planning commission in 2005, 2006, one of the first things that I asked was, why are we approving developments for areas that are zoned to schools that were already overcrowded? And so we even developed a subcommittee and studied it and had developers in it, had school board members, school superintendent in it. And the bottom line is this, the TCA makes no allowance for schools to be a reason for us to reject zoning or approval of development. So that, so that's off the table entirely. The other issue with that is, and Harry Gill made this point and made it, I didn't understand it at the time, but I, I grew to understand it, which was, he said, they won't let me build the schools until the kids are already here. They're not gonna let me preemptively build schools and then fill them up. So we always are playing catch-up. You know, we're always putting, you know, the cart before the horse because that's just how this, the nature of this, you know, system works. So as much as I wish that we could consider the schools, the school system, and factor that into this, unfortunately, we can't. We can consider infrastructure. We can consider road networks, road systems, you know, how we're gonna move people about, that sort of thing, safety, that, that kind of thing. So I do think from that standpoint, we do have to look at this awfully hard because I know, just when we were talking about putting the schools in out there, there was a whole lot of heartburn on the part of the road superintendent, the road board, those folks, trying to figure out, how are we gonna move that many humans in and out of an area that was, you know, never intended for that design? So the fact that this is a PUD gives us some flexibility in terms of denying it, the, you know, the, I guess the question, all this leads up to me, my question to Doug is, if, knowing what we know about this parcel, and Mike, I guess this includes you as well in terms of flooding and that sort of thing. Knowing what we know about this parcel, with its current zoning, how many homes could it accommodate?
The property is currently zoned RM, which is a minimum 15,000 square foot lot size. If you were just to take the total amount of acreage, 170, and just do a dirty, quick and dirty calculation, 170 acres divided by, you know, multiply that out to square feet, and then divide it by 15,000 square feet, you'd get 493 lots. Now, we all sitting here, we all know that that's in a perfect world, that there is no way they're ever gonna get anywhere near that number of lots. For the reasons that you said, there's a lot of undeveloped, really undevelopable area. You've got a lot of area that's floodplain-impacted, which will cause some concern. There is a Colonial gas pipeline that goes through that property. That's gonna cause some, some issues. You have to take into account road design easements, all those kind of things. When this, when there was a subdivision originally approved on this property back before I had, well, actually, when was that? Back in 2008, so I hadn't been here very long. The approval, there was one approved for 312 lots, and they were proposing a minimum 10,000 square foot lot size. That might even have been generous, in my opinion. You know, it's, it's hard to say exactly just how many lots are you gonna get out of that. It wouldn't be anywhere near 500, it'd probably be half of that, at least, 170. So I would guess probably somewhere between, you know, around 225, 275 range. I'm just giving you just a quick estimate based on kind of my thoughts, once you take into everything into account. And that's again, assuming as well that they have access to the sewer. You know, if you take the sewer away and you go either with a step system or just conventional septic tanks, that changes it even more. So there's a lot of factors that go into that.
Then just to add to that, I want to make this point just for the benefit of the neighbors, which is, assuming they could develop 250 to 400, we don't know what that number is, assuming they could develop that many lots out there. If we don't, if, if they choose to not go through the PUD process, we have no say-so on sidewalks, amenities, you know, other, other types of improvements for that neighborhood, other than they can just, you know, develop it as they would. You know, it, it can look like, you know, any other development. We can't do materials, you know, they're, they're not held to any standard. The advantage of the PUD is that it hold, the pattern book holds them to a standard. And so I don't think a lot of folks understand that, that at the county level, we don't have a designer review committee. We can't impose, you know, certain aesthetics on neighborhoods. And so I just want, I want the neighbors to understand that, that, you know, there's a lot of, you know, there's, there's always good and bad on every application. The, the one good on this application is that it's a PUD. It's also, you know, you can play that on both sides of the fence because that's also the reason that we don't necessarily have to approve it because it's a PUD, so they're asking for rezoning. So it's, it's a tough walk.
Right, and I've heard it, when I was at a conference, I've heard it said, when you say no to something, you're saying yes to something else. That's how I've heard it explained to me. Now, what is that something else at this point? We really don't know. So, but your point is, is well-taken. I mean, everything you said there was, was correct, that if this just develops as a straight RM subdivision. That if this just develops as a straight RM subdivision, yes, we will have some, say, in traffic matters and things like that, they would still be required to do some sort of a traffic study, just based on the number of lots that they could probably still get out of this. But as far as materials, as far as, like you said, amenities, sidewalks, those kind of things, those are all out of our control at that point.
Mr. Chairman, we, we made the, on the first application, we looked at, we, we saw today that we didn't think that, not that it won't happen, but that some type of commercial entity will eventually end up along that, that area. But we kind of decided tonight that it wasn't the right time. That, you know, maybe something, you know, it's, you know, as is is what needs to be right now, but maybe down the line, it would develop. And of course, that was the motion and what was ultimately passed. You can make an argument the same here tonight, that it's not that this might not be a viable option, but, you know, is it ready? Is it, and is it time to go down the 45-foot lot sizes, considering we haven't approved that before? Read an article today. Question's been asked in reference to the city's issue with Asbury Lane, and, you know, can infrastructure support the growth? And we're continuing to have that question, seems to pop up a lot lately, across both the county and the city. I still, and, and I'll take as much blame as, as anything, the fact that we still don't have a solid resource tool to plan with when it comes to these types of things. I, I still, I like the traffic shed idea. I really did, and I, you know, maybe should have spoke up a little bit more. When we were going through that, I thought it had merit, and I thought it had value. We all had different concerns about it, but I don't think we're any better off than we were. And I, I don't want to move forward anymore for the time on, that I have on this commission, however long that may be, without something in place. And if nothing else, I, I want us to leave tonight back to Doug with the, with approval of the commission to, let's, let's get back on target and, and see what we can do to plan appropriately. And, you know, I'll be the first to say that, you know, if I'm not being a useful body to this commission, then, you know, I need to step aside and let somebody else that can move on, because I have concerns of where we're going with the county, with our planning. And I made some decisions probably that I'd love to take back while being on this commission thus far, but I can't, I, I can't approve this. I can't accept this. I have concerns, but they, they run really deep. But I really want us to see if we're going to be an appropriate body and plan accordingly. So many people, and that's the thing about it, each one of us have brought different ideas over the last several weeks on what we like to see with this or with that. Let's put something in place that we can use, that we all feel comfortable with and, and stand by. And I know some of us have concerns we'll never get past the county commission. Well, we won't know until we try. With that said, without going any further, we can talk more about this later. Ms. Chairman, I make a motion to deny this request tonight.
We have a motion and a second to deny. We're still open for discussion or comments.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know you said a lot there. You might want to go back and, whatever was part of the discussion that was had tonight, delineate that in your basis for the denial.
I'm going to base it on the fact of, you know, they're a little bit on about what Commissioner Kush said around uncharted territory, and what we've done with lots. We've never approved this. The lot widths, I don't think we're ready. But it goes bigger, talk a little mister with Commissioner Reed here, and Commissioner Allen's already brought it with our schools. Laying the school around in our area that's not overcrowded already, and we've talked about that recently, about being more in line with our school board moving forward as well, and what they do and decisions they make, and hopefully we can continue to improve on that process. I look forward to that as well, but that's my basis.
Just, just to clarify, Ms. Allen mentioned that the basis of having schools is not a proper basis here, but would it be fair to say that it's more of the surrounding, the immediate surrounding infrastructure concerns and the impact that this development would have on those?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
For, for me, the challenge with this location is, we look at the other subdivisions going in around it, and they're close proximity to a state road where a turn lane can be required, a signal can be required, and to make this one acceptable with the lot, the lot width bothers me as well, but it's just, it's, it's almost dead center of an area that needs improvement in all directions. So how do you mandate what those improvements need to be that would be fair to the developer even? And so I don't know what that answer is. So I'm, with the school coming in, I mean, I know we can't, I'm not basing it off the school, but infrastructure may improve in those areas to facilitate this sort of development. But right now, I struggle with the infrastructure. It's just so far from anywhere that's an arterial to me. And I know that's designation of, of functional class of a roadway, that this is a lot of local roads that I just struggle with that many potential vehicles being able to maneuver safely through that. And to, and to put a burden on that developer to develop, to, to widen the roads in all directions, that's just not fair either. So I can't come up with a good reason to, that, to support that at, at this time.
Yeah, that would need a second, but then I think it'd be okay to have further discussion, because then you'd have a motion before the, the body to have further discussion. So you need a second.
That was an amendment? Yes, and that's the second.
We have a second.
Okay.
Mike, can you put up the 2010 flood map?
This was, this was two days after it quit raining. And adjacent to the rivers, the rivers rose up, stayed for a little bit, and then came back down. So it, this area wasn't impacted as much as karst areas that have a lot of sinkholes, but it, I imagine there was some flow out, out of the banks in these areas, which probably was close to the, like, the FEMA flood maps.
Yes, I saw the FEMA maps. I was just curious what it did in 2010. And actually, we were fortunate to get those flyovers when we did. But actually, it made me just think of a random thought that I want to contribute here from Mike and for Doug. I know our IT department is developing and beginning to use drones more and more. I think it might be meaningful if at rush hour peak traffic times, we began to have some current footage of what those areas look like. I think that would definitely support our planning process for us to be able to look and see about, you know, traffic stacking and, and that sort of thing, and how people are utilizing, how they're really utilizing the roads. Won't be a hypothetical study anymore. It will be, you know, real data. So I think that could be meaningful for us to see that.
Their, our IT department, quite frankly, they're, they just, they, they're encouraging ideas like this to be able to use the technology. So this is, that's a, a good, a good idea.
Other comments? The applicant is standing and would like to address, unless no one objects, I'm going to give you a couple of minutes.
Chairman and staff members. I'm Taz Lundey. The applicant was source land. I was raised on Atlas Street in Murfreesboro, 900 square foot house. Went to Hobgood, Central, Riverdale, and twice to Middle Tennessee State. I'm hearing a lot of talk about these 45-foot lots, but really, isn't it the house that we're talking about? The houses are bigger than what they used to be. These houses are bigger than what I grew up in by double and triple. This is a classy little subdivision. I understand about traffic, but we talk about traffic every time. We talk about something. We talk about traffic. I think this is a good opportunity for a subdivision to be built, to add some value, and to provide housing for people who are wanting to buy a house that's not $450,000. The last three months, the average house sold has been $285,000 in these, in the south and east areas of Rutherford County and Murfreesboro. In Rutherford County as a whole, it's averaged $290,000. We're not building houses to exceed that by very much. We're building houses for families. We're building houses for Rutherford Canyons. I'm a real estate agent as well. I help people live a dream. People are moving to Bedford County. People are moving to Coffee County for affordability. And none of you can sit here and tell me the $240,000 is a cheap house. It isn't. Some of you have lived here longer than me, but I've been here 57 years, and I've seen this town grow. And there's not a lot we can do about that. We want it to grow. But I'm telling you, I believe this is a great subdivision. I believe this is a great opportunity. And I believe you're going to like the houses. But let's not get hung up on 45,000, 45 frontage lots. Let's think about how big these houses are. Thank you. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to deny. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to deny carries. Thank you. Other business? Doug, you got anything?
I do have just a couple items, just briefly. Of course, you know, part of our responsibility as staff is to be able to provide you training hours. Planning commissioners are required to have four training hours per month, or per year, excuse me. That's through state law. We do have a couple of opportunities coming up for you, if you're interested. The Tennessee chapter of the American Planning Association Conference this year is in the Middle Tennessee area. It's actually in Franklin, at the Coors Springs Marriott. Those dates are October, it's actually the 9th through the 11th. If you'd like to go through the whole conference, please let me know as soon as you can, because we'll probably have to just do a kind of a, kind of pull it all together, and then let everybody, pay for everybody at one time. There's a couple of options. You can either go for the whole conference, or there's going to be some dedicated training times. I have a flyer that I'll email you tomorrow. But there'll be some dedicated training times specifically for Planning Commission and BZA training. One session will be on Thursday afternoon, late Thursday afternoon. The other one will be Friday morning. So if you go to both of those sessions, you will have the required four hours that you need. For rural, or I'm sorry, for county planning commissions, regional planning commissions, you are required to have one of those hours to be on private property rights, which that will be included in that as well. So if you are interested in that, again, I'll email you this information, so you'll have it. Those dates, again, October 9th through the 11th. The second opportunity is right before that, the week before. That's the Cumberland Region tomorrow. That is the Power of Ten Regional Summit. I know several of you in here have gone to that in the past. That is going to be on October the 3rd, which is the Thursday right before this. They have a keynote luncheon, Charles Marone. He is the author of Strong Towns. This is something that he's, is actively putting out there, actively speaking about. They got him. We actually tried to get him for our conference, but the timing didn't quite work out. But if you're interested in that, again, that's October 3rd. It starts at 11 o'clock, and there's a reception afterward at 4:30. There'll be panel discussions, a luncheon keynote, and then some breakout sessions in the afternoon. So if you're interested in either of those, of course, the counties will take care of the registration fees for that. But just let me know. Next, next time, I'll send you an email tomorrow. But let me know, if you can, by the end of the week, how you want to, if you're interested in any of those. With that, thank you. That's all I have.
Couple of things. Mike Kush, Commissioner Kush is, has actually got approval through the county commission to put together, and I'm going to probably not say this right, Mike, but it's a select infrastructure and, and funding committee that has a deadline of the end of the year to look at how we're going to fund what this, this county needs in the future, as far as roads and other infrastructure as well. The makeup of that committee is requiring two planning commissioners. Lee Vogel has graciously dedicated some of his time the rest of the year, but I think it's probably only going to take three or four meetings to get through this. And I need someone else, or we need someone else. So tonight, before you leave, come up and volunteer to spend a little bit of time looking at infrastructure and how, and some alternatives to property taxes and funding that infrastructure. Is, is that kind of appropriate, Mike?
Very good.
Okay, very good. So think about that, and before you leave tonight, we need to, we need another volunteer to be presented before the county commission, I think Thursday night. So see me or see Doug before you leave tonight. One other thing, a long-term planning commissioner has resigned. Mike Vaught has served his last meeting. And Mike will be missed. He's been a valuable asset to this commission for a number of years, a long time. And he's going to be missed. But with that, we have a member sitting out in the audience. His name is Marvin Whitworth. And Marvin will be, has been recommended by the mayor and will be presented to the county commission Thursday night for membership to this commission. And Marvin, have you got a, kind of a glimpse of what you're in for? You still in?
Tell him to eat before he gets here.
But you'll make a, you'll make a good commissioner, and we look forward to, to working with you. Anybody have anything else? Our next meeting is scheduled for September the 23rd. That'll be a 9:00 AM meeting, and the planning mess, September 23rd, 9:00 AM. Thank you for your time, your attendance, and as always, your participation. We are adjourned.